Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 22nd Select Board Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for...
We're not using that, so that'd be great. Thank you. We're going to start this evening with Old Business, Item A, a public... Is there anyone here to make public comment? Come on up. Just give us your name and your address and...
And the baby's name.
I know we're both here together. My name is Rebecca Healy. I live at 33 Edmunds Road. So I just wanted to take a couple of brief moments just to talk about some of the speeding and kind of reckless driving in the library district. I had emailed with you a couple of times, Ms. Phillips, so it's nice to meet you in person. So there were, at the intersection of Edmunds Road and Lyman Road where I live, there were three accidents in the last year. I spoke actually with Officer Wilson at the police department, who was extremely helpful, and talked about increased enforcement to enforce the safety rules. But the roads are, they're wide, right? They're downhill, they're straight, and it's by the highway, so a lot of people are using it as a cut through. There are also a lot of pedestrians in this area, a lot of kids walking to school, so obviously, you know, we want the area to be safer. So I just wanted to start the conversation, or maybe it's already started, I'm not sure, about traffic calming measures and, you know, what we can do to make just the road safer for everyone. So I won't take much more of your time tonight, but I am going to stay on this, so I will be back to follow up on this because I think it's important, it needs to be addressed. But, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you know that that road, and I'm pretty sure it's that road, originally was supposed to have a strip of green grass down the middle?
Ah.
So that you had cars going in one direction, but it just never came to fruition many, many years ago. I wasn't around then, by the way.
Yeah, just traffic calming measures. Yeah, definitely, things like that, you know, stop signs, speed bumps. I think there are things that we can choose to do to make it a lot safer, but that is all I have for you tonight, so thank you so much for your time.
Okay, literally, what is the baby's name?
Penelope.
Oh, very cute.
All right, thank you so much.
Her first peeping, she'll be...
I know, I love to say, but I don't...
That's quite all right. So cool. Any other, any further public comments? If not now, we will move on to Old Business, Item A, a public hearing, an application from AT&amp;T for small cell wireless installation on utility pole near 477 Stevens Street.
It was interesting to see you found a spot.
We did.
Can we continue the public hearing from a meeting that feels like a very long time ago? So if we could just vote to reopen it, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Good evening, just to reintroduce myself, my name is Edward Paree. It's P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, here representing AT&amp;T. So just a brief history, we had proposed a location, this is a small cell facility, it's small antenna on the top of the pole with the equipment attached to the pole. In this instance, as with some of the other sites we've done in North Andover, we've removed the equipment cabinet and attached the equipment directly to the pole. So we had found a location in the old center historic district that didn't play so well with them. We were able to move outside of the district on Stevens Road. We initially proposed to use an existing pole right in front of 477 Stevens. I know that the property owner had been here and raised some issues with respect to the visibility. In a, I guess, a matter of luck, we did go and speak with National Grid after meeting with Melissa, Jean, and others in Town Hall. National Grid did agree to move the pole over to the property line to get it away from the owner of 477. So what you're seeing tonight is an amendment to the application we filed. We're still technically at 477 because we'll be just at the property line of 477 and 469, but it'll basically be along the property line where the driveway is. For 477, this is a small fenced area at 469. We re-advertised, re-noticed all of the butters. The need is the same, the installation's the same. Rather than take up the time of the board, I'd be happy to answer any questions or address any comments from the public, but I think at the end of the day, we did come up with a win-win situation, and hopefully the public feels the same way. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you...
No, I was just going to say, thank you.
So the people involved, nobody is, you know, putting any type of criticism for the new location, I take it from what you've said?
There are some...
Or probably people here just...
Yeah, we have not, there may be people here with us, but we have not received any, but we typically don't.
But the pole in front of 477 is going to be removed.
That's correct.
It does not clear from the drawings, but it's going to be removed.
It is, and in the drawings it says, and I think in the photo simulations, it says it'll be removed, the wires, the pole will actually be planted. I think you're going to have a hearing for the actual pole location itself, but this is for the AT&amp;T installation. That pole will be removed, the wires will be attached. It was within whatever National Grid's ability to, you know, move the pole, yeah, right, carry a wider span, so, you know, fortunately it worked out. Kind of a win-win. The pole will get out from in front of his window and we'll be able to attach, hopefully.
Any other comments from the board?
That was my question. I was, if we were getting rid of the pole in front of their house, but you answered that question.
And is there anybody here who would like to speak to this?
Yeah, hi. I'm William Holt, and I own 477, 475 Stevens Street. And I appreciate moving the pole to the lot line, but I just don't think that putting it exactly on the lot line with my driveway right there is going to be, like, far enough. My driveway's 10 feet wide, my neighbor's driveway's 12 feet wide, and there's an eight-foot fence in between the driveways, that's a dead spot. If you can move the pole, like, four feet, center it in that span, I don't think it'll bother anybody. It'll look better, and, you know, my tenant will be able to get into their driveway, no problem.
So you're not suggesting they're changing anything other than the pole location?
If you can move the pole.
So that gives you...
I feel it's probably a no-win situation here at this point in time, so if you could do that for me, I'd appreciate it. Right now, my tenant has a small vehicle, but if I do have someone that has a larger truck at some point in time, you know, plow in the driveway, it's going to be difficult. I have pictures that show you, like, the actual... So if you could put it in that center it, in that fence area, that'd be great.
Can you speak to that?
We don't control the pole, this is the problem, and as I explained at the last hearing, we're subject to National Grid. I believe they're going to be in for the location, that's certainly a question you can ask them, but they control the pole, they control the location. I don't know if it'll actually be exactly on the property line, but, you know, we're just attaching to it. So we just don't control that. If there's a public hearing on the location, maybe you could make the request of them, it won't matter to us.
I was about to say, so if they move it a little here or a little there...
Would it... This would be that they can't run wires, though? Is that what happens sometimes, is it's too far?
So right now, the span that it's at in front of my house is a lot further than what it would be. By moving it to where I'm proposing, the span that it's at now is way greater than what I'm asking you to do.
Right, the one in front of your house and then the further house up the street by the fire station, that's a lot closer than the one from your house.
Right, one is like 78 feet, and right now it's like 137 feet to the next town.
Right, so it's going to split the difference.
So if you move it to my lot line and a little bit further, you might be off by maybe eight feet from being centered, which isn't bad at all.
Four feet won't make, shouldn't make a difference.
I didn't know there was a max, you know?
And to be clear, this hearing is just... You can see, like, how it would actually be in the driveway.
Right. This hearing is just for putting the AT&amp;T equipment on the pole, so when they become, when they, when they come before us for the pole, that's when we negotiate the position of it.
And if we can't negotiate that position, then we...
Then it won't move forward.
It won't do it.
We don't do it.
Yeah, if you could, if it doesn't get moved, then I would like to come back to this again, then.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Because I can't, I have pictures of, like, what these actually look like and the size of these, and being up against my property line with my driveway right there, it's not going to be good.
No, I agree with you, I think it's too...
I appreciate it not in front of my house, that's great, but if you could just, if you just look at the, my neighbor's yard and my yard, and if you put it in the center of that fence, I think it looks great for everybody, and it won't be a problem for any driveway.
And it's there, it's there, grass, right? Driveway and then house?
Could I show you the picture?
Sure.
So mine's on the left, is on the right, so that's eight feet of fence right there. And that's a better view. So my lot line is pretty much where the black and white driveway is, and that would be very tight for someone to come in and plow. But if it gets moved over, say, four feet, there's plenty of access for both.
Yeah, from the picture, it actually even looks like it's already there, you know, from the, if you look at the photos, they gave...
Right, so the way my neighbor painted the, like, he painted the driveway there, so they're kind of putting it, like, right where the black and white meet, but that's too close.
Actually, this one looks, Phil, this one looks like, this, I don't have to show this picture, it looks like it's right, I'm going to get rid of that thing.
The drawing that they...
It looks like, it looks like it's exactly where you're suggesting, yeah, if I can get rid of that.
This is the right...
Oh, okay, so if it's, if it's like that, I have a paper one that was mailed, and it looks like it's right on the, to me, it looks like it's on the, where they painted...
Yeah, I think this one looks different. Okay.
That, to me, looks like it...
Yeah, but I think the other...
Are you looking at the digitized one or the plans itself? If you're looking at the photos, I mean, those are digitized, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rely on those.
So if you did that, I'm happy for it. And I wouldn't...
I'd also know...
That's fine, but if it goes, like I said, it's a driveway, then I just...
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and like I said, that's, like, kind of what they look like, so, and you start closing my driveway more and more, and I'm like, okay.
Yeah, I would also say that the equipment cab, we're not using an equipment cabinet, as I mentioned, and the equipment, the radio units themselves will be on the opposite side, so that's where the free space is.
I actually do...
If not, I guess we'll be back to the other pole.
Sorry, that's okay. If you need them, I can...
I don't need them.
You know what it looks like?
Anybody else here to speak to this during the public hearing? No other comments during this public hearing? All right. Sure, going once, going twice. On that note, I will take a motion.
I'll move, we close the public hearing for AT&amp;T Small Cell Application for Utility Pole near 477 Stevens Street.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are moving on to licensing, so I will hand it right over to you.
Madam Chair, do you just want to vote on the application where we're here, that way the butters can leave? Or say if they'd like to...
So we're going to skip ahead to New Business and Item A, vote on the application from AT&amp;T for small cell wireless installation on utility pole near 477 Stevens Street.
Well, will we hear something? Oh, yeah, absolutely, for the pole.
For the pole, yeah, there'll be a public hearing. Yeah, yes, you'll know.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I will move that the Select Board approve the application from AT&amp;T for small cell wireless installation on a utility pole between 469 and 477 Stevens Street.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now we're heading back to licensing, so, on that note...
I'll move that we move it to licensing.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are now in licensing, and tonight we need to open a public hearing for an application for Class II license from Fred's Fuel, Inc., DBA, The Right Price Auto. Who thought that up? It was very creative.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you guys doing?
We're good. How are you this evening?
I'm fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So your name, please?
My name is Fareed.
Okay.
Fareed Jahah. I already have a car dealership in Lowell. I've been there for 14 years, and finally I found the opportunity to move up in the world, and now I'm in North Andover. I purchased 17 Mass Ave, which is a car dealership and a repair shop, and I would like to get a dealer license on it, if that's possible.
Okay. I'm sorry, what?
Do we have to open a public hearing?
Yes.
I'll move, we open the public hearing on an application for Class II license from Fred's Fuel, Inc., DBA, The Right Price Auto, 17 Massachusetts Avenue.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Okay, we are now in a public hearing. Is there any neighbors or anybody that has comment or would like to speak to this? We would ask that you come up and speak into the microphone and say your name and address, please.
Well, I've been here many times, but not at the microphone.
Well, thank you for stepping up.
My name is Claudette McMurray, and I live at 25 Mass Ave, which is next door to the, I keep saying the Shell Station, but down is Fareed's place, and I've been there since 1965, and I think we have hit the jackpot with Fareed.
How nice is that?
He has been wonderful, upgrading the surroundings, and I think he is just the man we needed down there to calm everybody. Yeah, so he's, he's been great, he's been great, and everything we talked about before at home, that he is very into keeping the area as quiet as possible, and which he knows we have a lot of traffic, and now that the windows are open, it's even worse, but I've been there this long, I hope for a little bit while longer. I go along with Fareed for whatever he wants to do.
Well, that's a pretty, pretty good endorsement, and we hope that you'll be there much longer than you've just stated.
Me too.
Okay, anybody else who would like to speak?
Pretty stellar endorsement.
It sure is. I don't think we've got too many of those.
Probably she should give me a good review on Google.
So Fareed, you're going to be selling fuel there and mechanical work and selling cars, or...
Only cars and repairing cars, no fuel.
And you'll only be repairing the cars that you sell, or you're going to be repairing cars for the public as well?
Only light repairs. That means no oil, no grease, nothing dirty, just like brakes, tires, light stuff, nothing really crazy.
Okay.
I would like to live in the neighborhood one day, so I would like to keep it clean and nice and quiet.
That's nice to hear. And the number of cars, you're...
It's 25.
It's 25? And that's, you understand that, it's 25 comments?
Yes.
Okay, and to be striped according to submitted plan? There are no comments from fire, police, or health? Anything? Okay, we need to close the public hearing unless there's a question for the gentleman.
I'll move, we close the public hearing for Class II license for Fred's Fuel, Inc., DBA, The Right Price Auto, 17 Massachusetts Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion to close...
One second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous vote, and I'll take a, take a motion if the board is ready.
I'm looking to the Select Board acting as the Licensing Commissioners approve the application for a Class II license from Fred's Fuel, Inc., doing business as The Right Price Auto, 17 Massachusetts Ave.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you, guys.
Yes, definitely.
Now, you could have stopped for dinner. I think last time you were here, there was talk of dinner. Did we do that? Not for us, for those at home, it's not for us. So I think, I think you're up.
Actually, I'm going to get her some olive oil from my country that we press.
That's even better.
That will be the best for the pasta.
I'm going to put my plug in that you look into joining the North Edifer Merchants Association.
I have to. Thank you, guys.
Good night. Okay, so the, hold on a moment, please. Next item on the agenda is, we did that, okay, application for common victuals license from Fernando Lopez of Edifer Pizzeria, 1812 Turnpike Street. So please state your name and your relationship with this.
Good afternoon, my name is Gary Ortiz, and representing, I mean, with Fernando, I've been his accountant for about four, five years in other businesses he owned, and his family. Fernando...
Could you just speak up just a little bit, because there's a fan...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, can we start over? My name is Gary...
No, I caught it as the rest of the board, you're also...
Yeah, my name is Gary Ortiz, and from Goats Accounting and Services, and being Fernando's Lopez accountant for quite a few years now, and his family also. Fernando wants to open a restaurant at 1814 Turnpike, used to call Mama Mia. So Fernando has, and his family has, over 15, 20 years' experience doing Italian food, but he also Mexican, and he wants to add to the menu some tacos and...
So a little spicy Italian.
A little spicy, yes. The area is nice, the landlord is awesome, too, he's been helping us with everything. Also, I want to thanks the town of North Andover because it's one of the best towns that I ever worked with getting licenses, and I have worked in over 30 cities and towns in Massachusetts. So I want to thank you guys for being so nice and helpful, because it was...
We have a great, we have a great team downstairs.
Awesome team.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to let Fernando introduce himself.
And we do hear that often, but thank you, it's always great to hear. That was a great endorsement.
Good morning, sorry, good night. My name is Fernando Lopez, and I tried to open the pizzeria right in 1814 Parking Street, and I worked all my life for him in Italian food, and I worked a couple of years in Mexican food, too, so I want to try to do two combinations in one place, too.
Sounds very exciting.
A lot of families might be happy with that.
Especially a little bit outcountry, as you were there, they probably will really appreciate the convenience of a location such as yours.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we had to apply for the common, common vital license to see if you guys can grant it to Mr. Lopez.
What's your date, your opening date? You plan for it?
As soon as we get everything, is everything set up, also the health inspector...
So you're close to it?
Yeah, the health inspector just gave us the green light tonight to, I mean, this afternoon, to start putting food into the fridge and start ordering the food.
So you're ready to go?
We are. Hopefully you guys are hungry over the weekend, too, so to stop by.
That sounds great.
Okay, and there's a favorable recommendation has been given from the police department, fire department, health department, and building inspector. I do not see any conditions, it appears as though there are none.
Madam Chair, I'll move the Select Board acting as Licensing Commissioners approve the application for a common victory license for Fernando Lopez for Edifer Pizzeria at 812 Turnpike Street. I kept hearing 814, 812, we're clear on the...
1812.
1812, but I also heard you say 1814, is it...
It's the same building.
Same building, okay.
Yeah, it's the same building, it's just the fact that sometime they have 1814 and 1812.
I'm going to go with the motion and say 1812 Turnpike Street, because I think that's on the application as well.
Yes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You know what, I should have asked you to do this, if you'd like to talk a little bit about the interesting things on your menu or a marker out on 114, because there's a lot of trees, and then all of a sudden there's a building or whatever, but, like what you might be near, just your time to let the public know a little bit about you and, and your business, if you so choose.
Okay, the only thing that I have to talk about is because I like, I cook everything my life in Italian food, so I can do pastas, sobs, great salads, and pizza. What about for the taco, for the Mexican food, I can do burritos, quesadillas, tacos, and fajitas.
So there's something for everyone.
Yeah.
Can't wait to try it.
We'll try it.
My family got another one in North Chancery. North Chancery. It's Benito, Benito, Benito Restaurante.
Now, do you do delivery, too, for some people?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just helping you to get your word out and let people know how easy it's going to be to try your, your new restaurant, so...
Yeah, we do delivery, too. It's a great family, because they all work, all brothers, like, three or four brothers? Three. Three brothers, all together, working all the time. There's one that never stops, he's working, he lives there, I believe. He's like, go home, never go. I get this place because my sister-in-law, she worked, I think it's Bueno Vista Restaurant right here, so the owner over there is a friend from the pizza shop over there, so that's how I can find the shop. And he give it to us, he goes, I'm going to give it to you guys, because you guys are nice people, like to work and everything.
That's great. The American dream. Congratulations.
All right, thank you so much. You guys have a good evening.
Have a good night. When, when are you open? When's opening day?
I've tried to open for this weekend already.
Well, this would be a good weekend to open.
Yeah, that would be awesome. It's a long weekend. All right, thank you so much.
Congratulations, thank you.
The top card, so the official address to use is the 1812 address, just so... Thank you. She can't help but watch, even though she went home.
Yep, I guess, yep, that's it, so I will enter our motion to move out of licensing.
I'll move that we close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now out of licensing, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. We have already taken care of Item A. We're going to go to the second Item A on the agenda, the request of the North Andover Farmers Market to close First Street from the entrance of First Main to... The request of the North Andover Farmers Market to close First Street from the entrance of First to Main to Main Street every Sunday from June eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, to October first, twenty twenty-three, from seven a.m. to two p.m. So, come on up and tell us.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to take my five minutes of fame here, if you don't mind. I'm Margie Rothschild, and I am the Chair of the North Andover Farmers Market Planning Committee. And as the Chair, I first of all want to thank Melissa and all of the town employees who volunteered at the market last season and brought their pickup trucks. It was amazing, like having so many of the employees there to help out and participate, and I think they had fun, so hopefully, they'll all come back again this season.
I think we have twenty-five signed up already, and I love the other day.
That's amazing. Yeah, so... And to D. Casey, too, because she was such a help to coordinate everybody's schedules and when they're going to be volunteering. So, I just wanted to say thank you. That's just huge for us because volunteering is the major message here for us this season because the market is going to be virtually doubling in size this year. We have more than twenty new vendors. We're going to have thirty vendors on site every week. We are maxed out on almost every date for the season. We're going to have food trucks, live music. We're going to have more craft vendors this year, more artisans, and new food vendors, and we also have our fundraising booth, so local nonprofits and youth athletic organizations can sign up to use it for free and come and raise money for their organizations. So, another way that we try to give back to the community. And we're going to continue and actually expand our Veterans Food Security Program this year with the couponing that we do, so our town's veterans can come and access the food at the market using the coupons that we provide. We work through the Veteran Services Department here in town, so just wanted to make sure I shared all those highlights. And so, having volunteers, again, like if you guys can help spread the word to come and help us with setup and tear down on Sunday mornings, it's like an hour to set up and a half an hour to tear down between one and two, just a huge help. Our committee is all volunteer-run, and they work really hard, so more people we can get to participate as part of this amazing thing that we do for the town would be awesome. And along those lines, I did also want to let you guys know that this will be my last year as Chair of the Planning Committee. I'm going to be stepping down, so we will be looking for someone new to take my place next season, maybe someone who wants to come in early and get trained on how we run things. We have such a great group of people who have been involved for a long time, so I just wanted to let you guys know that that's coming up.
Now, how many years have you been running it again?
So, this will be my fourth year running it, like as the Chair, and then I was involved for the three, basically since day one. I wasn't there before we launched, but as soon as we launched, I've been there, so... And I'm sure I'll still stay involved, but time to step down as Chair.
It's a lot. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Oh, my God, it's my pleasure. Absolutely my pleasure. Okay, I think that's everything I wanted to say. So, I would like to formally request, then the North Andover Farmers Market would like to formally request the closure of First Street from Main Street down to the entrance to the parking lot at the CVS between June eighteenth and October first, from seven a.m. to two p.m. every Sunday. Right? That's everything. Yes, so that's our request.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion as eloquently stated.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, but everybody who's in favor.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. We know how much you guys put in and what a great community event it has become, and everybody looks forward to it.
That's nice to hear, yeah. It is. It's really, really fun. It's going to be awesome this year.
Okay, all those in favor. Aye.
Yes.
Again, thank you very much, and your crew, and it's great.
Thank you.
And I love the work that you do with the veterans. Thank you for that.
Yeah, it's awesome, so we'll keep that going. All right, thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item, which is a request of the Festival Committee to use the Town Common on July fourth for the reading of the Declaration of Independence and Fourth of July Celebration from ten a.m. to two p.m.
I'm John Lenhoff. I represent the Friends of the Eighteen Thirty-Six Meeting House. We sponsor the event with the Historical Society and the Festival Committee. And I didn't plan on my five minutes, but I could certainly talk about this for a little while. Our State Rep. Traum Nguyen and Senator Feingold will read the Declaration of Independence, and that's followed by speeches by Frederick Douglass, Martin Luther King, and Lyndon Johnson. They're related to racial justice and civil rights. And there's also live music from local artists, and I have the tentative program here, if you'd like to see it.
Can we see him, Keith?
Yeah.
Thank you.
QR code that'll take you to the Friends website so that you can look at, I think, your last year's events.
Yeah, so if you use the QR code, it'll take you to the Friends website, and you can look at videos of the last three years that we've done this. And the first year was in the middle of COVID, and it was video only. We didn't do anything live, and after that, it became live. We were doing the outdoor event, so it was compatible with COVID. So, this would be our fourth annual, and it's a good mix of kind of entertainment and history. We're looking for permission to use the Common.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I will move... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I think we're good. So, I have a motion?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, yeah. We know this is something people really look forward to, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right, our next request is another request from the Festival Committee to use the Town Common every Tuesday and Thursday from six p.m. to seven p.m. from June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, to August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, for the summer fitness program. Come on. Oh, I'm so happy that you have a...
Hi, Ashley Valencourt, twenty-eight Chestnut Court, and this is Richie. He's joining me today. So, another Festival Committee request. This is just a continuation of our North Andover Summer Fitness Series. Same as previous years, Tuesday nights and Thursday nights from six to seven on the Common. We're changing it up a little bit this year. We're changing it up a little bit this year. Usually, you're used to Tuesday night is Zumba, Thursday night is yoga. Tally and her crew are stepping back a little bit, so they'll do a couple guest classes, but the YMCA has reached out, so they're going to do, I think they're calling it Y on the Fly, so now they're going to be a part of the community program, and they'll take over our Tuesday nights. So, it'll be like a mix of classes, mostly cardio, but same, same model, free for an hour. Another thing, we usually do, this is through the Youth Center, but we usually do a Saturday morning class, a couple of them, on the beach at Stevens Pond, which we'll continue to do, but there's a new yoga studio in town, and they've reached out to me to be also a part of this, which is really nice that we have so much interest. So, there, I don't know if there's opportunity for, I didn't put this on the application because I wasn't aware of it, but there might be an opportunity to offer a few Saturday mornings on the Common, if that's allowed, too.
You just have to come back with...
Yeah, with the dates. I don't know all the information. It was just today. It was brought to my attention, so I was like, well, it's good timing, but I have to amend the application a little.
It's okay. We can wait. Well, this is a very popular offering, as you know, what people have already started asking about it, so.
I know, me, too. Same. And I think it's nice that there are so many studios in the area that are interested in offering free classes for the community. It's really nice.
It's great. I'm happy to hear of the Y being involved, too. That's phenomenal.
I know. It's really nice. Yeah, yeah.
It's a perfect spot for it.
I know. I know. It is nice. It's nice to use the space like that, and I always find that it's nicer community, too. It's, I always see so many people, like for Zumba on Tuesdays, how many people bring their chairs to watch and participate. I think it's nice, and then there's a lot of picnicking and stuff, so we like it. Richie's usually there.
I love it. Okay.
And thank you for all your hard work.
Of course. Yeah, we're happy to do it, so... Yeah, of course. Yeah, of course. Happy to.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
So cute.
Accepted.
So cute. Be ready to go. Yeah, ready to go? Still, I know, now it's almost your bedtime. Someday, we'll have you come back and do the pledge of allegiance.
I know. We'll just say, "Yeah, can you get something for me?" All right, I'll walk you over. I'm so sorry.
It's fine.
It's okay.
You take the liberties. There we go.
Bye, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next item is a five-year contract for tasers for the Police Department, so... Let's tell manager, please, now.
This is one of those instances I talk about at town meeting where we can save money if we do a five-year contract instead of a three-year contract, so you can see that by entering into the five-year contract, we're actually going to see a savings over the five-year period of forty-eight thousand ninety dollars. So, the total cost over the sixty months is a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Basically, we're going to be purchasing in a cycle the tasers, so a certain number over the period of five years. It works better for us anyway because it allows us to replace ones that are aging out of the system.
Any comments for... Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board authorize the Town Manager to enter into a five-year contract for tasers for the Police Department.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hopefully, we never have to use them.
That's right.
Honestly, I think you actually use them more now than we have in the past, but because they're not only the weapon, they're a much better tool for us.
Oh, definitely, but it'd be nice if we didn't have to use any of them.
It would be nice if we never had to use them. I would enjoy hearing that as well, but it is, it is nice to have other...
That's not going to cause serious damage.
So, we appreciate them keeping on it. Our next item is to approve ARPA funding in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for design of Route one twenty-five slash Great Pond Road intersection, so we'd love to hear about that. Stanford is here with us to also join in this conversation, if you will have him. This is a match for a Mass Works grant that we're applying for, but he certainly can speak more eloquently to it than I can.
I think for sure. Jim Stafford, Public Works Director. So, essentially, this is, this is a continuation of a project we've had envisioned for a while now. As you know, there's sidewalks along Route one twenty-five, pretty much from, I guess, I would say from Casablanca up to the Amazon site. And then there's a gap between Casablanca and essentially Sutton Street. And so, we've envisioned a project whereby we have sidewalks, well, eventually, hopefully, all the way from downtown to get you across one twenty-five over at China Blossom and down the street as well, connecting all this. And we've envisioned it being connected to the old North Pump Station. One of the things with the new senior center, we think that it's just going to offer a great walking and the ability to go to the North Pump Station. So, this project is actually, it's going to be the design portion of it. It's a lot easier to get these grants when you have the match, and quite honestly, when you have shovel-ready projects, or at least a little bit more than just a conceptual. This will involve redesign of the intersection with Great Pond Road. As you know, right by Mad Maggie's there, you can really take a sharp right turn and just full speed ahead going down Great Pond Road. So, what we envision is actually closing that slip lane off and creating more of a conventional three, in this case, it'll be a three-way intersection where you have to take a right onto one, onto Great Pond Road. We think, I heard earlier, traffic calming, this is a traffic calming measure. So, as Melissa mentioned, we, you know, we're, we're shooting for another Mass Work grant, and hopefully, this will allow us to move in that direction and at least, you know, put us in contention because you do have to have a match for these product, for these grant programs.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you. I think when we all met for the one twenty-five corridor study, that was some of the big feedback we heard at Mad Maggie's when we were there, that that intersection is really difficult for people to navigate. I think there was one gentleman that said when he leaves, he takes rights, he just keeps going right until he can get back home because he won't take a left out of Mad Maggie's, so.
I can't blame him.
Yeah, he's like, "I'll just, I just keep going right until I can get back," so I think it's an important intersection that we addressed, so thank you.
I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the ARPA funding for, in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for the design of Route one twenty-five slash Great Pond Road intersection.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joe. Thank you for coming in. Item F, to approve additional ARPA funding in the amount of four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for open space and recreation plan.
Thank you. So, this is actually a continuation of a project we've already requested. So, as you know, our open space recreation plan expires this year. We had previously put in an application for fifty-three thousand dollars. We have gone through a comprehensive bidding process as well as a full evaluation, and it came in slightly higher than our original estimate, so we're just asking for four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars so that we can sign the contract and get moving on the project.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to consent items. We have three consent items, to accept donations to the Youth Center for summer shows on the Common, to accept donations of a hundred and fifty dollars from the North Andover Women's Club to the library for books, and to accept donation of twenty-five hundred dollars from the North Andover Women's Club to the Youth Center for swim lessons at Stevens Pond. So, first, we'll vote on that, and then Select Women's Media would like to speak to the Women's Club donation to Youth Center, so I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the consent items with a, with the, a note going back to each one of the donors, a note of thank you going back to the donors.
Yes, okay. I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will recuse myself because I'm on the Women's Club. So, what the, the hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, has already been sent in by the Women's Club. I don't know if you're aware of that, Melissa, but...
I haven't seen it yet, but I'm sure it probably is already processed.
I'm pretty sure somebody has it. So, the Women's Club, we talked a little bit about the needs for our children to have, have fun, learn to, especially to learn to swim, and the club voted on a twenty-five hundred, two thousand five hundred dollar scholarship program that will be run by Rick Gorman of the North Andover Youth Center. And sort of for families who are truly in need, you know, they've fallen on hard times, whether, for whatever reason, that he would, for, again, for families in need, that he would decide what would be best for that family. If they bought a membership but didn't have enough money for swim lessons, this would kick in. And so, we, we hope that people who are looking to keep their kids busy, make sure that they learn how to swim, but you've, you know, money's tight right now for whatever reason, to certainly reach out to Rick Gorman of the North Andover Youth Center and put in an application for the scholarship. And there's probably many different ways that he can fulfill whatever the family's needs are, at least in part, maybe in full. And if anybody out there, too, would like to contribute to this, we'd like to make this something of an annual event so that they can either send a check to the North Andover Youth Center, I believe, is that one Johnson Street, something like that. It'll get there, I'm sure, to Rick Gorman in, to donate towards the North Andover Scholarship Program. And if there's any money left over, we will continue it on to next year. So, we think it's a really good program, and we want all our kids to be safe, have a wonderful summer, stay out of trouble, and just go to bed really tired. We hope that people, if they, and any amount is always appreciated, and so I am grateful to the club. I'm no longer the president. I, like your friend over here from the, it's like, I think I've been doing this about fifteen years, and I think I was only supposed to do... was only supposed to do two. So I am really looking forward to just, just helping out, but it's a great organization, and we really try to, we, all we do is raise money and give it away back to the town of North Andover. So we hope that some people will consider this.
Thank you.
Let me just say, I think this is tremendous, and, you know, I know you're the one that got the Women's Club to do this, and this is truly, you know, putting your money where your heart is, because I know you've always been a tremendous advocate of swimming lessons on the pond and making sure everyone has those, you know, can afford swimming lessons and can get them when they need them. So this is really tremendous, I think, you know, so thank you to the Women's Club. And I'm sure, like I said, I know you're the one that brought it to them and asked them to.
They were so enthusiastic, that, that amount just bounced out of the members' mouths, like, like, whoa, that's great, so, thank you, and thank you for, and I'll be sure to say thank you on your behalf. Yeah, we're, we're feeling pretty good about it, because many of the members learned to swim there themselves, so we know that we want our kids busy and tired.
Thank you.
33 Johnson Street, we were close, 33 Johnson Street.
It would've got there.
We wanted to get there.
By the way. We'll end up at the general, the old general store, the ice cream.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, thank you so much. Oh, by the way.
Well, there we go, all right.
That's really doing stuff.
Right? Actually, accept the check at the meeting.
Literally, exactly.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to the approval of our minutes from the open session of May 16th, 2023. Has everybody been able to review them? All right, I will take a motion.
I'll move approval of the minutes from open session of May 16th, 2023.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Handing it over to our Town Manager for Town Manager's Report.
Just a few very quick things, I promise.
Which should be, yay, town meeting is over.
Yay, that's what I was going to say. So just thank you to everybody who came to town meeting. I thought it was really interesting and refreshing how many young people we saw, even people in high school that were getting up and speaking for the articles. It was really kind of an interesting town meeting, and people were very respectful, which I appreciated. And also to just the town clerks' teams, and the tellers, and the moderator, and all the people who really put behind the scenes getting things situated, like our lovely friends at camp. There's a lot that goes into town meeting to make it a success, so kudos to all of them. I just wanted to recognize Laurie, who's not here today, probably conveniently because she didn't want to be recognized, on her YWCA Tribute to Women Award that she received this week. And I want to recognize three retirements. I know I don't always do that, but these were three big ones. We had Paul Jettress from our IT Department, EJ Folds, Lieutenant in the Police Department, and Glenn Alt, who runs the Water Department, all retired over the last 10 days.
Wow.
And so we certainly will miss all three of them. That's a lot of institutional knowledge out the door at once, but we wish them very well in their retirement, and they will, Glenn particularly said he was looking forward to no more Mondays, so, to no more Mondays.
That's not when he meets with you, is it?
No. He just was like, I don't have to get up and go anywhere on Monday anymore. I'm like, well, that does sound nice.
Just in time for summer for all of them. That's great news.
But you are right, they're all very good employees, and they will be, they will be missed, and they, they've made a mark, all of them.
Mm-hmm.
And we hope they thoroughly enjoy whatever's next. Okay, Select Board updates.
Well, I went to the sheep sharing, and it, I kept thinking, oh, they can't have it, there's just going to be pawns all over, because it just poured and poured, but it was great, the weather was great, a lot of people, a lot of fun stuff going on, and the dogs and the sheep performed wonderfully, and it was, I'll tell you, they worked really, they, people, I say this often, people have no idea how hard the Festival Committee works to bring these events for everybody's enjoyment. They were out, and this will give you a good sampling of the things they do, in the pouring bucket rain on Saturday setting up. Their clothes were so wet, they literally were saying they were sticking to their bodies, they were drenched, but they did it for the people of North Andover. So if you run into them or 4th of July, make sure you go up and say hello and say thank you, because they so deserve it. It was, it was a great event, it was, it just, it was really, couldn't have been better. The weather was great, we weren't up to our knees in mud, so it was a great event.
The weather was great. Before we continue with that, I just want to make note of our schedule from July to December. I don't know that we need to discuss it right now, but it is on our Updates and Comments section, so we'll work out any problematic dates between us, okay? But it's out there, so we will, we will work with anybody who has conflicts. And now we can continue with any other updates.
No, I would just echo what Rosemary was saying about sheep sharing. It was a really beautiful day, and such good food vendors and the food trucks, and.
And they did well, is what we understand. They've had some rough years lately, you know, as everybody has with the COVID and everything else, and not having things, so yeah.
Yeah, the lines were extensive for the food trucks.
And, and it's great when people sponsor some of those booths, like the Lions Club, you know, this is how they make their money.
They were really successful. I spoke with one of them.
Yeah, they're great. I used to remember that one, too.
Really successful, so.
Wonderful people, they were just wonderful.
Overall, like, a really big success, so.
And just like to thank Mr. McGravy, I want to call him Dr. McGravy for some reason, but Mr. McGravy for having all of us today to listen to the civics, the eighth-grade civics projects.
The kids were great.
To, again, to like, go back to town meeting, those kids were so impressive that they could even, they even got up and spoke, is a big deal.
And the best part was how excited they were when they.
How excited they were, yep. The one, one of the kids talked about had thermodynamics, and, you know, like, he just had his argument, like, ready to go, and I thought it was so impressive, so.
No, they were great.
I think we're in good hands in the future.
I have a couple of things. One is just to let you all know that there will be a Phyllis Slade art show and sale on June 3rd from 12:00 to 4:00. She is over 90 years old and an integral member of the community. She was active in the North Andover Improvement Society, the Historical Society, the Garden Club, North Parish. This will be a sale of all her remaining paintings and a reason to come and celebrate her.
And also, did the renovation of Patriot Park, she headed that up with a few other people, she.
The list was very, very long.
Very long, and her artwork, her artwork is spectacular. It's beautiful.
Wanted to bring that to people's attention.
Good thing to do.
And also a reminder about our Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony that will be coming up on Monday at 10:00 AM, I think, I hope I'm correct about that.
I'm pretty sure.
At the Common, so we hope to see you all there.
Yeah, the parade leaves the Common in most original.
And goes to Richmond, yep. So, on that note, our next meeting date will be June 5th, 2023, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
So motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be with the Memorial Day, everyone.
Yes.